All right, the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Garwood Planning Board will will come to order. My name is Donald B. Fraser, Jr. I am the board attorney. So until we have reorganized and elected a new chairman, I will preside. I'd like to start up the meeting, please, with a moment of silence. Oh, yes, I should say, as the chairman has pointed out to me, pursuant to the open public meeting law. This is to state for the record that adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to the public by publication in the Union County Hawk on December twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, posting on the borough website and by posting and filing said notice in the office of municipal clerk. This is a regular meeting of the board. And now we will commence a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. Okay, Adele, if you would please call the roll, including the new members.
Here.
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 Mr. Greed.
Yeah.
Palagio.
Yeah.
Here.
Mr. McCormick.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Barkin.
Okay, thank you, Adele. The first order of business will be that we will administer the oath of office to new board members. I have here in front of me for Rich McCormick, Stephanie Bianco, Penn Capo Bianco, Mary Ann Hay, Steve Barkin, Mayor Jen Blumenstock, and Councilman Vincent Carney, their respective oaths of allegiance. I would ask that each of those individuals, please raise their right hand and repeat the oath of allegiance after me. And when we get to the part of duties of the office of blank, when I say blank, you can just each individually indicate the position to which you are swearing. So with that having been said, I state your name.
I, Stephanie Bianco.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I do further solemnly swear or affirm?
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will impartially and justly perform all the duties.
I will partially and justly perform all the duties.
Of the office of blank?
Of the office of planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will, I will complete the notarization of the written oaths later in the meeting while we're doing something else. But next order of business, and hopefully we will be able to do this in only one vote rather than fifteen, as certain other body politic in this country have recently gone through. But at this point, I will call for nominations for the chair of the planning board for the two thousand twenty-three year.
If I may, I would be honored to nominate Steve Greed for chair.
Okay, we have a nomination in a second. Are there any other nominations? Does anyone wish to make a motion to close nominations? We have motion and a motion in a second to close nominations, all in favor of closing nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, nominations are closed. At this time, then we will have a roll call vote for the election of Steve Greed as chairman. Adele?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Palagio?
Yes.
Can you say?
Aye.
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 Okay, so congratulations and condolences, Mr. Chairman. And God, I turn the gavel over to you, sir.
Well, thank you, folks. It's appreciated, and I really do mean it from the heart. I'd just like to take, take a moment just to, just to review a few things and just to, just to kind of express my, my thoughts on some things that we've done. And basically, I'd like to express my appreciation, first of all, to, to, to this board. It has operated in the past and will continue to operate extraordinarily well going forward. I am humbled by the experience and knowledge of this board and how we have come together and performed well over the past many years. All I can say is that thank you very much for what you do for this community and for the people of our town. Now it's my pleasure to welcome our new mayor, Jen Blumenstock, and Councilman Vince Carney to our board. And welcome as we look forward to a new year on the board and serving our community. We also have a new member, Mary Ann Hay. Mary Ann, you want to, you have anything to say that you would like to, just as an introduction for yourself or not? We, yeah.
That I'm honored to be a part of this community. And this opportunity to get back to this community, I think, in color, after three years, it's been a great, wonderful community.
Great. Well, we, we welcome you and, and you're appointed to an alternate two for a period of two years. Ms. Hay brings with her several years of experience as a member on the zoning board of Cranford as well. In addition, we have Rich McCormick and Stephanie Bianco, and they'll be performing, they'll be moving up from alternates to full members of the board, each with a four-year appointment. So, welcome to all. And thank you all. It's my pleasure to proceed as chairman of the Garwood and Planning Zoning Board for two thousand twenty-three. And with that, I think we'll, we'll move on. So at that, at this time, we have an election of the vice chair, and I'm going to call for nominations for the vice chair of the planning board for two thousand and twenty-three. And I would like to make a nomination for Kathy Palagio as, as a first nomination for that, for that position. Okay, do we have any other nominations first? Seeing none, we have a second for Kathy Palagio. Adele?
Motion opposed nominations.
Motion opposed to any nomination? Opposed? Oh, okay.
No, say motion to close.
Motion to close the nominations. Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, Adele, can we have a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Chair Greed.
Yes.
Yes. Absolutely.
Aye.
Thank you. It's closed. Election for the vice chair is.
Do they have that problem at mayor council meetings?
Yes. Okay, and carrying on, we have an extraordinarily, extraordinary number of, of people applying for the board attorney. So I hope everybody had all the, I hope everyone had, had an opportunity to review all the packets. But I think we have one outstanding person who's been helping us and assisting us for many, many years. Now twenty, you know, twenty?
More than twenty.
More than twenty years.
About like ninety-nine or so.
Yeah. So we have, we have, actually, we have one, one application, and that's, that's from Don Frazier, who's been our ongoing attorney for many years. And so do I hear a resolution appointing Don Frazier?
I'll second that. And I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, hearing none, motion carries. I don't know. Do we need a vote?
Well, it's not appropriate for me to rule.
Okay, well, you know what? To cover ourselves, to cover ourselves, I'll tell you what.
Traditionally, we've done it by acclimation, but you can certainly think.
We'll take a roll call. Aye. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, and along the, thank you, and well appreciated.
I'm not even gonna bother to try to say, could we just decide on aye or yes?
Well, now that you're a board attorney, you actually could bring that.
I brought it up, and I've just been ignored for twenty years with.
I know, but the problem is.
Jen, it's.
And if you notice, the only people who do say.
Of course I do. Of course I do.
I think it's appropriate that you say yes.
There you go. I'm with you.
I'm, I'm okay with either one.
Are you looking for uniformity, Mr. Frazier?
He's not gonna get it.
I'm well aware. Well aware. Thank you.
Okay, we can carry on for Resolution PB dash two, the resolution appointing consulting engineer and planner to the planning board through and including the January twenty twenty-four reorganization meeting of the board. And we have an application, one application, and that's from our ongoing planning board consulting engineer, that's Victor Venegra. So hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to read the proposal. And if we have, do I have a motion to, to, to go forward with that resolution?
I'll make that motion to appoint Harbor.
Consultants.
Consultants. For as a board engineer and planner for the, for this year.
Okay, roll call, Adele.
Aye.
Yes.
I'll acquiesce. Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and.
What? No other ones?
No.
Yeah, we usually have.
Yeah, we usually have, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I know what a great job you do.
That was a nice proposal you was, you know, in color. I just, I just looked at those, you know, two pages.
I do have a question for you, though. Do the, have any of the rates for the individual planners or engineers going up? No.
I, I don't think so, Steve. I looked at them.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think it did, but I just wanted to verify. I know that.
Pay it, you know, the escrow.
Yeah. Okay, very good. All right, now we have the most important position here, and that's to.
One who runs the board.
To appoint a secretary to the planning board. And I can tell you, that's the most important position here. And with that, we have our ongoing person right here, and that's Adele Lewis to, to the secretary to the planning board through and including January twenty-fourth reorganization meeting of the board. Do I hear any, do I have anybody opposed? Seeing none, I would like to, I'd like somebody to make a motion to prove that.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Adele Lewis as to secretary of the planning board. And I will second that.
Okay. Roll call.
Certainly do that one by acclamation.
Well, Ms. Adele, well called. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Very good. Motion carries, and congratulations. That's. Okay, with that, we have four, four resolutions, PB four, PB five, and PB six, and I'm just gonna kind of combine them. PB four is for designating Union County Hawk and the Star Ledger as the official newspapers. Resolution PB five is a resolution of readopting the rules and regulations. And resolution PB six are, is to adopt the designated meeting dates for the two thousand twenty-three year. So if everybody has looked at the dates and if there are no complications with any of these resolutions, do I hear a motion to accept these resolutions as, as indicated?
I will make that motion to adopt.
Do I hear a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing the motion carries, and I think we're pretty much finished, aren't we now? Yes. And the, the planning board twenty-two annual report has been included in the packet. So if there are any questions or any concerns, please let us know at this time.
Are we supposed to adopt them?
Okay, seeing none?
Yeah, we, we do, we do need to adopt it, yes.
Let's, oh, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you and Adele. I had reviewed it and had some comments, and I appreciate the comments coming back and making additions to the, to the report. And since Mayor, I know you've received it as council member before, but receiving for the first time, there are a couple of items in there that we, we want to discuss this year in terms of proposed ordinance changes and look forward to working with council on doing that.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Kathy, do you have anything?
No, we just have to adopt it.
Okay. So.
I'll make that motion to adopt the two thousand twenty-two annual report.
Great. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, and we have a, the minutes of the December thirteenth meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Go here second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just gonna abstain.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, new business, we have the adoption of the two thousand twenty-two zoning board annual. We just did that.
Before you leave, before you leave, new business and get the claims, I just want to note for the record that I directed Adele prior to the commencement of this meeting to communicate to Steve Hale's office at the Javerbaum firm with regard to the certificate of nonconformity application for two sixty-seven Spruce Avenue. I asked Adele to communicate to Mr. Hale a request that whatever documents are referenced in that application, that copies of those documents be submitted electronically so they can be circulated to the board, and the board would have those documents in advance of the next meeting, or assuming in advance of the March meeting, when I understand. Adele, that's when Mr. Hale wants that heard. Okay, so I just wanted to note that for the record, Chairman.
Okay, very good. As noted, thank you.
Um, okay. Chair, before we leave new business, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to say, thanks. I just wanted to, well, I'm just wanted to say how excited I am to be up here. And so honored with the reappointments and new appointments that I was able to make, and there's such a wealth of knowledge up here, and I'll be the first to say this is not my wheelhouse. I've been exposed to it over the past six years. But I look forward to learning a lot from everybody up here. So thank you, and it's gonna be a very good year. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
I think you're absolutely right. I think it is going to be a very good year, and we do, we really do have a wealth of knowledge on this board more. And I, I won't say that I, I know all the boards in the area, but I can say from this board's perspective, or from my perspective, that this board is one of the, one of the, one of the better ones, well, if not the best out of the lot. So, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to take a moment and more or less echo the mayor. I'm honored to be sitting up here. When I saw Mr. Frazier on my way in, I said that kind of always wanted to sit up here ever since I first appeared before this board a number of years ago.
I remember that.
Yeah. I think, I think you and, and Stephen might be the only ones still here, and Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, we've been around a while.
And Adele, of course. That it is, it's an honor to sit up here, but also, and it was on display last year during the board deliberations over the, the short-term rental, which I've referenced in my comments to council a few times, and I had being on the council kind of pulled me away from, I used to attend a lot of these meetings. I used to livestream them, and I always walked out of here having learned something, and just the attention to detail that's been paid by the member, members of these board, this particular board over the years with some of these larger developments, and also all the way down to the, to the smallest of details on a residential, like, nonconforming use. It's, it's impressive. The, the members of this board who are volunteering their time really do their homework and put their effort in, and you know, as a resident and also as a council member, I really do appreciate it. I know that anything that gets sent over here is going to get handled correctly. So I'm looking forward to joining the team for the next year, and hopefully you all can teach me something.
Well, thank you and welcome. That was a, that was a nice commentary. Okay, and we have the new business already adopted, the two thousand twenty-two zoning board annual year-end report, and that we just took care of. So we have some bills and claims, and we, we did have, we did, we were going to do the short-term rental tonight. However, I think for other reasons, we're not going to do that tonight, and we'll, we'll push that off for, for a future meeting. With that, we have some bills and claims. We have, yes.
Do you anticipate putting the short-term rental ordinance on for the next meeting?
Well, the question is when the next meeting is.
Okay, that, that's fine.
And that's, yes, for the next meeting, but it depends on when that is.
Whenever it is.
Okay, yes.
Because I just wanted to say, I know that the mayor and the councilmen are certainly well where the short-term rental. I know we do have one new member who hasn't, you know, been able, who hasn't read anything on it, so just want to make sure that she's be able to, you know, read it and be brought up to speed. You did, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure it's not your first, first go around with short-term rentals. No, I didn't think so. Okay, well, with that, we have some claims, and we have one from, from meeting attendance by Don Frazier for the January eleventh meeting tonight.
Don't get used to that.
I was gonna say, that's impressive. That really is impressive.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to move? Well, the New Year's resolution. Chairman, do we have to move that?
I'll ask you. So that's for nine hundred and fifty dollars for tonight's meeting. Do we hear a motion to accept that bill?
I'll make a motion.
Go here second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the bill is paid. And what's?
Let's see, what is this? That's what I was talking about. That's, that's the nonconformity for Hale's plan.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, and this, the one that we had mentioned earlier, I just note, is now rescheduled for March twenty-second, I believe it is. At the request of the applicant.
I would just, just for the record, for the, for the purposes of the public, what we're saying is that the application for PB twenty-two dash zero five, two sixty-seven Spruce Avenue, block five eleven R one, in the RA zone, certificate of nonconformity. in the RA zone, stick it, certificate of non-conformity will be held for the March, what meeting?
Twenty-second.
March twenty-second, um, two thousand twenty-three meeting. It's not caring, they have, they have to serve new notice and publish new notice. Yep, okay.
Okay.
But they say he was here tonight because you're interested in that. It's not gonna be tonight.
And we have only one bill, two bills from uh Carbon Consultants?
Yeah, we uh.
Victor, you have to start billing.
Wow, I like this new uh, this, this, this new year. I'm telling you, this new dawn is good.
But the difference is that it doesn't come out of the town's budget. It comes out of the contractors.
Okay, well, th- this is a bill from, from Harvard Consultants, um, and it's escrow, it's in the amount of eleven hundred dollars, the first bill for Second Avenue Redevelopment Plan Phase One and uh Second Avenue uh Redevelopment for Phase Two for four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents. Do I hear a motion to accept those bills?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Hearing that, motion carries.
Mister Chairman, um.
Yes, sir.
The last meeting, you know, uh, Victor brought a number of questions back to us regarding uh the Russo project and there were others, I just wanted to ask, I, I'm not asking you the detail. Are we, are we making progress on um getting Russo closer to um?
Completion?
Uh, trying to think of what you're looking for, um, should if, no. Okay, and the second thing is, um, do you, my, one of my pets, you know, has uh the, uh, the antenna, uh applicant, have they planted their trees yet?
We notified them that their request is their money.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, they were, we did not approve that. In fact, their electrical term is still open. So the company that is doing the work is not closed.
So I, I know, I know the answer, I mean, you, so you'll hold their money till they plant in the spring?
Well, we're, we're holding signing off on a final electrical.
Oh. Till the trees.
Normally, Cranford Construction Department has to be in the sign off. And they don't have open.
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
And just one more, Victor, do we have any update on the, on the paper board? On Garden Homes?
I did notify, going back to Russo, that there, uh, I have one of my planners, Dave, doing the research, make sure what phase which you release Phase One without traffic. For the, the lighting. Uh, according to their attorneys, Phase two. I was, I was telling him from the the Navy in Phase two, because Phase one is more developed, Phase two is the institute of traffic. For the uh, the fire. We're still supposed to have games with the county. And they're supposed to step them up because they're supposed to be playing. Uh, they're, they're moving along with Phase two. Which is this side of the South Avenue. But again, I want to lease, I, I also told them I may not, I'm the only given a TCO. They're not a final C O on Phase one. Just like, uh, this flashing signal, whatever we do. We kind of thinking, even when people walk. Uh, with that, kind of what you call a hawk signal.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
County already said, but it can't be mid-block.
But they, I don't understand that, since they have hawk signals on county roads mid-block. Yeah, because there's, there was, there's one, there's two in Westfield. One at the old Lord and Taylor, which is not activated now. And one on a Rowway Avenue, or
The only thing is.
Or, or a Central Avenue.
They don't want that.
Well, that's different.
We're thinking of having that, moving it to west. You know, because this way, they either cross that west or they cross that center. Uh, but we have a new county in here from the stand. Uh, the next few months.
Yes, I heard you. I, I understand he's very good.
So I thought we have a new county in here that wants to be in here, but that just can't be held itself. I can, but I'm waiting to work.
All right, and also on Phase one, I don't think they're done with the, with um, um, the landscaping end of it, like around the trees, they're supposed to have a metal grates. Yeah, because I specifically remember that because I brought that up.
And then, I know you know this too, then the whole parking thing too. Um, and did we agree, Mister Chairman, um, I don't remember, did, did we ask Victor to actually come back to us with the answers to all those before we, not that we have to authorize him to issue a TCO or CO, but before he issued that, did we say we wanted to make sure those other things were buttoned up?
For the parking, you mean?
The part, well, everything, the, the parking, the. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we won't get, yeah, we won't sign off until. Okay.
And I wanted, that normally, unless they want me to start billing them, because they normally give me a list of what they feel is open and then we double check the first two.
And they've not given you that list yet.
So, um, so I, 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 so what I do then is instruct my planner, gave the, the, the file and work with the, I'm coming up with a list, which he has. So uh, he's not here for me, but he has to work.
Okay, so we are moving forward on that. Okay, all right, good, very good.
Uh, also Chairman, uh, uh, this year, we're gonna have the, the, the uh master plan uh reexamination. Um.
And that gives.
That's gonna be coming up.
Yeah.
Whenever the consultant is come, um.
Well, actually, I, I, there was some correspondence coming from Kyle's office and next week, uh, there's going to be a, a meeting with concerning the master plan. And um, we do have some, I believe, and Adele will clarify this, uh, we do have some time between now and the March meeting, which I assume may be our next meeting, uh, the March twenty-second meeting, but again, um, that may change, but uh at this point in time, I think we're gonna cancel the twenty-fifth. We'll take a vote on that and then um, and then we'll see about the, the twenty-eighth, I think it is, February twenty. Yeah.
February twenty.
So we'll uh, we'll see about the February meeting, but at least the next meeting, we'll run that by tonight and uh, and make a motion to, to not, not cancel that meeting. Um. So uh, that, that gives us, and what I was alluding to, that gives us an opportunity to uh move on the master plan. Um, as we have some time and.
Yeah, we're gonna have some hearings though, you know.
Do that.
Public hearings, because um we have an open space element in there and that needs its own public hearing bill, am I correct? Right, or can we do it combined?
I think it needs its own, we, we need to have one for the entire master plan.
Right.
I mean, I'm looking at Steve, it's just the entire.
Okay.
Yeah. The entire master plan itself requires.
Need one?
Hmm?
Needs one public meeting.
Hmm, yeah.
Okay, with that, um, do we have any other business that, uh, yeah, please, Mary Ann?
Not. Uh, um, 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 everybody, uh, uh, should receive a copy before the.
We have not happened yet, no.
You know, like, right now, it's only a few of us who are working with the consultant, since we can't have more than, than uh four board members meet, meet on it, but of course, each and every board member who's sitting up here on the dais and the public will have an opportunity to comment on it.
But the existing master plan, you know, is on, on the website, right? Okay, all right. Uh. Okay, uh, with that, any other new business or any comment or anything that we should bring up while we're here? Sure.
Speaking to Mike. Oh, yes, the.
Turn it on.
As the municipal, also the municipal zoning officer. And as a zoning officer, I made a determination the other day, about a month ago. Property, the old kitchen uh place next to the bank on North Avenue by the bowling alley. It was an old kitchen supply.
Mm-hmm.
I signed off on an engineering company, a small engineering company occupying space.
Nice.
I made a mistake. Because in that, that's the only zone, this, the CB zone only permits offices on a second level. But the person signed the lease based on my signature. So normally legally, I'm gonna stop to going back on it. So someone contacted me, say, oh, there's, there's someone going into that building, an office, and that's not permitted. And I double-checked my files and says, you're correct. He goes, so, yeah, so, uh, but he already pulled permits from Cranford to do some renovation and he signed the lease based on the zoning officer's certificate. So I notified, said, based on my knowledge, once I make a decision and the decision, it wasn't a clouded decision, I made it on my own, he didn't give me false evidence. Um, that I, I made an error, that normally I'm gonna stop and pulling his permits because I made it on a good judgment. So there may be an engineering firm occupying a small engineering company, the kitchen supply. I look back at the ordinance and I'm going, a lot of retail has been in strip centers and such has been taken over by offices now. You see, you see more medical clinics, you'll see more accounting, like Gary's over here. Uh, I think that's a little antiquated. I think maybe we should look at when we update our ordinances. Two of our ordinances, the CB zone and the GB zone, do not permit offices on the first level, only retail. So you can, yeah, it's, it's a little antiquated and I think if we're making changes via the master plan, that that's something we should think about is permitting office space in our downtown at ground level. Because again, how many delis are personal train, I mean, majority of what I sign off on is personal training. And so on, and so on. So I mean, we must have twenty, we have the fittest in this battle.
It's true.
Here four years ago.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, every other one is either some, but with the beauty of it, they're mom and pops, they're small fit, they're small training people who's starting out on their own, they're small salons, starting out on their own. We do get inundated with those. And so, so I'm thinking we should contemplate this board, changing our ordinance to permit uh professional offices on a lower level.
That's a perfect time with the master plan coming up.
Because if you do it during a master plan, we don't have to send notices to all the owners, we can do it as part of the master plan. So.
That's.
Um, Mister Chairman, I, I, I would agree with Victor. Um, reason I'm sitting here going back and forth is because it was written a long time ago and if, if you you know, so much of the zoning origins is actually dictated by economics, you know, the marketplace. And years ago, and I remember Cranford in particular, didn't allow office on the first floor, you're trying to promote retail. Um, today, the retail market is, I don't know where.
Right.
And so the idea uh thirty years ago of not permitting office in the first floor because you're trying to create that traffic, that, that people traffic of shopping, you know, on the first floor, you didn't want offices because in many times, it, it's like, uh, I was gonna say something, I won't, it's uh uses that create sort of dead space and you don't want that in your shopping district. But I, I really do believe that going forward, uh, we have to be much more open in terms of uh what we consider retail.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you mentioned uh, uh, one of the gentlemen in, in uh uh Victor's office, uh Gabe Baylor, I, I worked with him for many years, he was in the private sector. And um, in other towns, they actually considered restaurants as retail.
I was gonna say, can you redefine what retail is?
Yeah, and you can, and we didn't agree with that and uh, you should ask him about that, it's a good story. Um, but uh, we probably should look at that and also I don't remember what our ordinance says, but um about upper floors, you know, some municipalities don't allow the conversion of office into apartments. And we should probably look at that too to see what we do permit. And uh, so probably a whole bunch of uses downtown should be looked at.
But do we want to do that?
I, I'm not advocating e- either way.
I. Do we want to do it when we're looking at the master plan, or should we do it as a matter of, let's look at everything in the bigger picture, you know, not
I, I think the rec.
After the master plan is, is.
I think. But I think the, the recommendation can only, it only has to be.
It's only a recommendation.
No, no.
A recommendation, right?
Cool.
Kind of.
Yes, but what I'm saying is that it only has to be a sentence, you just have to have a sentence, look, look into, there, we already have recommendations in there, look into this, we just add office, you know. Um, you, uh, first floor uses in commercial zones and then obviously the discussion would take place afterwards.
The ordinance was drafted, there was no ADA law. So you could open an office without an elevator and without handicap access, which you can't do now. So it, it behooves us to put offices on the lower levels, which is much better for ADA accessibility for, for, for office than, because some, no one's building, no one has built, except for Mister Villarreal an office in Guywood in fifty years. Mister Villarreal is the only one to, to build an office. Uh, and he has, he put an elevator in, but if you're a small attorney, like, like Gary over here or uh, small practicing accountant. A, a little strip center that, you know, like I told people too, sometimes you want to work next to a restaurant, so the employees for lunch, they leave the office, they don't get in their car. They walk over and they, they buy a sandwich and they go shopping within the strip center, so they, they're really working because a lot of municipalities did not permit office in say strip centers, say Old Bridges of the World and the Route twenty-two, but, but now they've changed their mind because no one's building office complexes anymore, in fact, they're knocking down the office buildings and building residential. So now the, the, the office park is no more. So now the offices are moving more to the retail, the retail space, which is good. Because now you have people shopping and dining where they work.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I kind of like it, you know.
Good. Okay, anyone else? Any uh, anything to discuss?
I, um, yeah, I had the last meeting, I did bring up the, um, like an item, um. Um, 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 under the short uh term rental um, that was adopted by the uh, by the council which we recommended. Um, there was um, there was, how many items? There was, there was a there was uh two items that I thought should also be in like a different section because it, it was under short-term rentals, it was not under like it, it wasn't under a, a zone or it wasn't under um, anything specific. Um, and that had to do with the, um, um, uh, uh, rentals of pools, the pool rentals and the filming. Um. I thought that the filming filming would be under, should be under just, uh, just a residential not business area, but I don't know what council. Um. It didn't specifically say just uh residential. That it wouldn't be allowed. Um. And the pools, I would assume that would be the same thing, so there's a section, um, uh, under under, under, uh, under the uh zoning regulations that I will bring up, um, if that's okay, Chairman.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
At the next meeting. Um, and show you specifically you know, where it would be.
Where you think it would be more appropriate.
Yeah, where would be more appropriate, not saying, you know. Um. Um, it's okay now because it's the middle of winter, nothing's going on. But, you know. Only, you know, uh, forward. I would think it would be under a zone, you know, rather than a short-term rentals.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, very good. Anyone else? Okay, um, so Adele, um, we'll make a motion then to uh. Okay, um, so Adele, um, we'll make a motion then to, uh, to waive the meeting on the twenty-fifth of January. Uh, you have nothing on, on the docket, right? Okay, um, do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Want to open it up to members of the public on?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Um, at this time, I will open up the, uh, the meeting to the general public for any, uh, comments or questions. Anyone on? Anybody, anybody looking to come on? Okay. At this time, I'll close that portion. Um, so, uh, here a motion, um, to, uh, to, um, waive the twenty-fifth of January meeting. Um, and, uh, do I hear a second? Second, uh, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, so our next meeting that was scheduled for January twenty-fifth is now not scheduled. So the next, the following meeting that is tentative right now, well, is in, is on, on record, um, is for February
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So, um, we'll, we'll see if there's anything that comes up between now and the twenty-second, but at this time, Adele, you have nothing in the, in the, in the stream, right?
Nothing.
Okay. Well, I think that does it for us tonight, so with that, do I
Chairman, are you looking for a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yes.
Make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Wait, wait, it's not eight-thirty.
That's our New Year's resolution.
Motion on the table, Mr. Chair.
Second, all, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, we're adjourned, thank you.